Good afternoon all, it's just gone past twelve and we're just coming back into the City Governance Committee. So today, I would like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land on which we are gathered, and pay my respects to past, present and emerging. Welcome to the City Governance Committee of the 19th of May 2021 and I declare this meeting open at twelve noon. I would like to advise meeting attendees that this meeting is being publicly webcasted and audio recorded, with the exception of any confidential discussions closed to the public under Section 254-J of the Local Government Regulation 2012. I have a leave of absence for councillor Russell for medical leave, do I have a mover and a seconder? Councillor Stemp has moved, councillor Murphy has seconded, all those in favour please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously, thank you. Councillors, I note that there are items on the agenda today that are confidential, and while the public live streaming of the meeting will be turned off during the closed sessions, a motion has been prepared to confidentially audio record any closed sessions. As the Local Government and Committee Meeting Code does not have provisions for the recording of confidential discussions at this time, a motion must be resolved before we can proceed with confidential audio recording. This is due to councillors expressing an interest in improving the accountability of our decision-making by keeping a record of confidential discussions to allow for the review and understanding of decisions made on confidential matters. I note that the proposed motion will be as follows, and it will be up on the screen. Number one, that in accordance with 7.11a of the Local Government and Committee Meeting Code, the provision of live streaming set out under Section 12.3 of the Meeting Code be suspended for the duration of the closed sessions of the City Governance Committee meeting held on the 19th of May 2021, for the purposes of the audio recording the closed session for council's internal confidential use only. And number two, that the confidential audio recording of the closed sessions of the City Governance Committee held on 19th of May 2021, as detailed in clause one above, be deemed confidential and be treated as such in accordance with Sections 171 and 200 of the Local Government Act 2009 and the recordings remain confidential. Is there a mover for this motion? Councillor Bradley has moved, do I have a seconder for the motion? Councillor Murphy has seconded, do any councillors wish to speak to the motion? No, I now open the floor to vote, all those in favour please raise your hand. And that has been carried unanimously, thank you. I will now refer to item 4.1 and I invite Chief Executive Officer Mr Silvio Trinca to please enter discussion, oh he's up the back, I thought you were coming down the front, sorry. Before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? There being none, I will now refer to Mr Trinca to open public discussion. Mr Trinca, you may proceed, thank you.
Thank you Madam Chair, thank you councillors, good afternoon. We're here to, the first report is to look at the performance, the quarter three performance of the operational plan. I'm pleased to say that the performance of the operational plan projects is in a far healthier position than we were at the same time last year, with ninety-two per cent of the projects on track or completed. So, there are, however, and I'll take the report as read and happy to answer any questions, but I would like to make a note on a couple of items which are included for changes to recommendations. The first one was project NG 2.1.1, which was in regards to the news and community website. There's a commentary in there that that won't be delivered this year and we're asking that the project actually be moved to next year and be renamed Our Logan Digital Offering. In reviewing the project, which started off as purely a media project, it became evident that it was much bigger than that, it was actually about a complete digital offering, which includes the marketing branch. And so now, and given the marketing branch also looks after our Logan magazine, it was considered best to roll the two projects together and deliver it as one project. And so our recommendation is that that project be moved to next year. Couple of other projects that are on the monitor status. The first one was to do with the Riverine Discovery Centre feasibility study and council's aware of that project through, you know, a previous SLT briefing, but also in the fact that we've recently applied for some funding for that project. So, the actual location is yet to be tied down and as a result, we're suggesting that we remove the target date. And the next one is in regards to Chambers Flat Wastewater Treatment Plant. Although the wastewater people are well advanced in their overall planning for that site, a recent decision or a recent consideration has been, should we be looking at relocating part of the road through that site now that we have ownership? So that has thrown a spanner in the works and we will need to work through that first prior to completing all the detailed planning for the site. And so we're asking for that project to just be monitored. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on the report.
Thank you, I have councillor Kranzky.
Thank you. Through the chair, Silvio, you might not be the best person to answer the question, so I'll probably make this more statement than a question. I was disappointed to discover NG 2, that that project is not completed and we're now looking at a completion date not until next year. I know the mayor and the deputy mayor and I had had discussions with the director and so on on advancing this project to enable councillors to have greater engagement. It is, I'm sure it will be news to councillors that that's now been delayed till next year. I don't think that they had any indication that that was going to occur until it's turned up in this report today. I recognise that there has been a transition, well not really a transition, but this project will fall under the Marketing and Events branch instead of the Media branch. But again, I mean it'll be, councillors will have been here almost two years and we won't have seen any action on this particular item when it was actually something that had been endorsed quite some time ago. A statement, not a question.
Mr Trinca, did you have a response?
No, those comments are acknowledged and I understand is the meeting happened in the last few weeks and that was when there was a clarification provided and that's as a result, this is the outcome.
Thank you, councillor Harry Meyer.
Thank you Madam Chair, when you change the scope of a project halfway through, it's going to have an impact on timelines. So, the scope's been changed, the requirements have been changed, so it affects the timelines. Has the change in scope affected the financials behind that project?
Well, these projects were all going to be delivered using in-house resources, so it wasn't going to be using consultancies and as such, the wages for the staff are on to other projects, next year they'll be realigned to meet these priorities as well. So, it is a bigger project, so as you said, the scope has changed, so there'll be a different cost because there will be a component of marketing now in the, so there will be an increased cost, but it is out of recurrent funding, not out of new funding.
Thank you, so I'll answer it for you. Does anyone else have any questions? No, I'd just like to say I concur with councillor Kranzky, I was shocked when I did see this come through the report, but I'm pretty sure we'll probably await the arrival of this as a positive step for us. Thank you, is there a mover for the report's motion that's on the screen? Councillor Bannon, are you moving it? Councillor Bannon has moved the report, do I have a seconder for the motion? Councillor Raven has seconded, I'll now open the, do any other councillors wish to speak to it, sorry? No, I'll now open the floor to vote, all those in favour please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously, thank you councillors. That marks the end of Chief Executive Officer Mr Trinca's report, is there any general business for Mr Trinca? No, Mr Trinca, do you have anything general for us today? No, perfect. There being none, I will now move on to the next item. Next item is 5.1 and I will invite the Director of Innovation and City Transformation, Dr Scott Burke, to enter the discussions. Before we open discussions, do any councillors have a conflict of interest? There being none, I note that 5.1 is confidential and I note that it is considered necessary to take the discussion of this report into closed session as it is a confidential report, as it contains confidential budgetary details. Do any councillors wish to move into closed session for this item? Councillor Raven has moved us moving into confidential, do I have a seconder? Councillor Stemp has seconded that, all those in favour of going into confidential, please raise your hand. That has been moved by all of us, we'll just take a moment to move into confidential and get the gallery to...
All right, councillors, on the screen I note that we've had a confidential table document, and as it's a procedural motion, we just need a mover. It is up on the screen. Do I have a mover for that motion? Councillor Murphy has moved. All those in favour, please raise... It's procedural, so we only have to move it, and then if everyone would like to vote. That's voted unanimously for all of us in the room, noting Mayor Power and Councillor Lane out of the room. That's okay. We're just bringing the other motion up on the screen. Okay, this is an amended motion that the report just be received, so please cast your eye over this. Councillor Raven has moved. Do I have a second for the motion that's on screen? Councillor Murphy has seconded. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Lovely, that's been carried unanimously with the exception of Mayor Power and Councillor Lane, who are not in the room. I will now refer to item... Excuse me, 5.2, but before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? No, there being none. I note that it is considered necessary... Oh, I note that 5.2 is confidential, and it is considered necessary to take it into discussion into closed session. However, I'm in your hands. If you would like to go into confidential or not. Councillor Raven?
Given the status of this particular programme, the budget sequence, I don't think we need to go into confidential, just happy to receive the report.
Lovely. We will just amend the motion. The amended motion is on the board. If you could cast your eye over it.
Happy to move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Raven has moved. Do I have a second? Councillor Stemp has seconded. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. That has been carried unanimously with the exception of Mayor Power and Councillor Lane, not in the room. Perfect, okay. That marks the end of the Director of Innovation and City Transformations report. Do you have any general business for us today?
No, Madam Chair, I do not, thank you.
Does anyone have any general business for Dr Bug today? Wonderful. Thank you so much for your time today, gentlemen. We will keep going. We're now referring to late report, item 6.1, and I invite the manager of Water Service Performance, Mr Ben Steele, to please enter the discussion. Before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? No, there being none, I will now refer to Mr Steele to open public discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, councillors. Through the chair, this report is seeking council's endorsement to enter into sole supplier agreement with IDEXX Laboratories for the supply of E. coli testing materials and peripherals. Colilur 18 is the methodology that IDEXX Laboratories endorses and supplies council, and it is a well-utilised methodology across the water industry to test for E. coli in our network. IDEXX Laboratories is the sole global supplier and manufacturer of this methodology, which is why the report is here today, seeking council's endorsement. Just for context, last year Logan Water undertook 2,555 E. coli tests across the city using this methodology, and under previously endorsed sole supplier arrangements, our annualised spend is about $50,000 a year for the testing equipment and peripherals with IDEXX. So happy to take any questions through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do any councillors have any questions? I just have one question for you. If this is a sole global supplier, where is it located?
There is a distribution centre in Australia, but it is a European-based company.
Lovely, but it is here. Fantastic. So, Councillor Bradley, did you want to move the report? Councillor Bradley has moved. Councillor Bannon has seconded. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously. Thank you so much. With the exception of Mayor Power and Councillor Lane still not in the room. That marks the end of your report. Is there any general business you have for us? Does anyone have any general business for Mr Steele? No. Have a lovely day. Thank you. Moving right along to late item report number 6.2. Can Finance Manager Miss Caroline Bug please enter the discussions? And we'll just wait for her to pop down. Before she does, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? No, there being none. As soon as she's ready, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Item 6.2 is the year-to-date March financial report. Council continues to reflect a strong financial position year-to-date against budget, just noting that the operating result remains quite strong at $14.89 million, which is 5.4 million above year-to-date budget, predominantly driven by operating revenue, which is 5.76 above budget year-to-date. I also note the ratable property growth in the March quarter was at 1,004 properties. And also in relation to the outstanding rates, this is the last year-on-year comparison before the COVID hit us last year, so it's good to note that our current outstanding rate is relatively close to where it was last year. So I think that's a really good result for us and the ratepayers. And the debt has remained generally constant from last month. Other than that, happy to take questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Councillor Raven?
Less of a question, more of a comment in regards to page 15 of the addendum agenda, which is page five of your executive financial report in regards to the local infrastructure programme. It's more disappointment and dismay at how long it takes to deliver anything under this programme. I know that that's not necessarily your fault, or not your fault, or we shouldn't deliver things, but I appreciate the report. It's helpful because it makes it very clear when you look at the funding allocated, $9.4 million versus year-to-date actuals, half a billion dollars. That's pretty atrocious. I don't know, it's the first year and there's been some delay because we didn't have capacity to assign funding effectively for the first four or five months of this financial year, but I'd still hope that that speeds up rapidly in the future years. And I look forward to being able to quiz the delivery branches about why there's so much delay.
Thank you. Do you want to respond? No. Any further questions? No. Oh, sorry, Councillor Bradley, sorry.
Thank you. Through the chair, on page 18, which is page eight of your report, refers to the sundry debtors, and I noticed that it's only 1% for greater than 60 days comparison to last year, which was 6%. Can I just ask what has been done differently in the branch to get it to that level?
Through the chair. You'll actually find this time last year, we had a significant debt rolling through in that 60 days. So there's not necessarily anything different, just the size of the debt that was on the books.
Ah, the size of the debt, okay, thank you.
Beautiful. Any other questions? No. Do I have a mover for the report? Councillor Bradley has moved. Councillor Bannon has seconded. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to the report? Just waiting. And all those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. That has been carried unanimously. I will now refer to late report, item 6.3, and before we open discussion, do any councillors have a conflict of interest? I note that 6.3 is a confidential report, and I note that it is considered necessary to take the discussion of this report into a closed session, as the report and attachments contain detailed budget information. Do any councillors wish to move into closed session for this item? Matt your hands. No? Are we happy just to receive this report? Yep. Do I have a mover to receive this report? Councillor Bannon has moved. No.
Part of the manager, not to receive, as per...
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
That would create problems.
Getting ahead of myself in my script, sorry. Sorry, just getting ahead. I now open the floor to councillors to discuss the motion that is displayed on the screen. Just noting that we didn't go into confidential. So do I have a mover for the report's motion on the screen? Councillor Raven, do I have a second? Councillor Bannon? Or do any other councillors wish to speak to the report? No. I will now open the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Lovely, that's been carried unanimously. See, it throws me in my script, sorry. Down to 6.4. 6.4 again is a late report, and before we open discussion on this item, do any councillors have a conflict of interest to declare? Noting there being none, I note that 6.4 is confidential, and it is considered necessary to take this report into a closed session, as the report and attachments contain detailed budget information. Would anyone like to put us into confidential? No? All right. I now open the floor to councillors to discuss the motion displayed on the screen. If you cast your eye over it. Do I have a mover for the motion? Councillor Raven has moved the motion. Do I have a second for the motion? Yep. It will just take a minute to scroll. Councillor Raven has moved. Councillor Bannon has seconded the motion that's on the screen. Do any other councillors wish to speak to the motion? No, there being none. I will now open the floor to vote. All those in favour, please raise your hand. That has been carried unanimously. Thank you. That marks the end of Finance Manager Miss Caroline Bug's reports. Is there any other general business for us this morning? No? Does anyone have any general business for Miss Bug this morning? Afternoon, sorry. It's been a long morning. There being none. Thank you, Miss Bug. And I note that due to social distancing restrictions, not all managers or staff could attend today. That being said, does anyone have any general business for the Director of Organisational Services, Mr Robert Strachan, today? No. Well, that completes our agenda for today, and I declare the City Governance Committee meeting, 19th of May 2021, concluded at 12:46pm. Thank you. Have a lovely afternoon.